All right, I'd like to welcome you to the April 5th at 5:09 special session. City Villa Park and council welcomes you to this meeting and encourages your participation. Regularly scheduled city council meetings are held on the fourth Tuesday of each month at 6:30 PM, but this evening is a special city council meeting, budget session review. To speak on any item of the agenda, there's no one here, but if there was, there are green cards in the back for individuals to fill out a speaker's card and give it to the city clerk. Given the requirements for social distancing, we strongly encourage submitting comments by email in lieu of attending the council meetings in person, and public comments should be submitted by email to info@villapark.org by 3:00 PM the day of the special meeting, city council meeting, budget session, whatever it is. Steve, would you please call the roll?
Okay, Councilman Colacott?
Here.
Councilman Pitts?
Here.
Councilman Zimmerman, I mean Mayor Potem Zimmerman.
Present.
Mayor Miles?
Present.
And Councilman Rossini is unexcused absence.
Thank you. Mayor Potem Zimmerman, would you please lead us in the flag of allegiance?
Could we all please stand? Raise our hands over our hearts, address the flag, and ready to begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, limited in justice for all.
Thank you. At this time, members of the public may address the council on any off-agenda items within the subject matter jurisdiction of the council, provided that no action may be taken on off-agenda items unless authorized by law. Comments are limited to five minutes per person and 30 minutes for all comments, however there is nobody present for public comments. Do we have anyone that has written in?
No.
Okay. First item on the consent calendar is approval of storm drain easement agreement at 9552 Henderson Way. Could you please give the staff report?
Okay, this is a follow-up to the discussions we've had. At some time, I'll defer to the city attorney.
Yes, so this pertains to the storm drain collapse on the Horeal property that happened a couple of years ago. That matter has been handled by CalJPIA, the city's quote "insurance broker agent," for lack of a better term. They have come to a settlement to resolve the matter, as one element of which, if you remember when we actually put the storm drain back in, that the location of the storm drain was outside the limits of the actual easement dedicated to the city. And we had talked to the attorney for the property owner, and they said, and we agreed that we should clean that up, so the storm drain location is actually within the legal parameters of the easement. That was made part of this settlement agreement, and the easement document in front of you is just that. It's basically the same easement moved over a couple of feet so that the storm drain of the city is located within the easement area. So with that, I would recommend that you approve it, and I will note that I obviously already want 2021 to be over because I put the wrong date of 2022 on the document. It's obviously intended to be effective April of 2021. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes. Do the terms of the previous easement continue, or is this the total easement document?
The terms of the easement document continue, the location of the easement is shifted.
So for example, if the homeowner damages the new facility, let's say if they decide to construct a swimming pool or whatever and bust the storm drain, they would be liable for any repairs?
Yes.
Okay. And if we need to do any maintenance within our easement, they would have to remove any improvements at their cost so that we can conduct maintenance?
Yes.
Okay.
Anything further?
No questions.
Okay, do I have a motion?
I'll move.
You got a second?
Robbie, you second?
Yes.
Steve, can you call the roll?
Okay, Councilman Colacott?
Yes.
Councilman Pitts?
Yes.
Mayor Potem Zimmerman?
Yes.
Mayor Miles?
Yes.
Okay, so that passes 4-0.
Okay. Onto new business, number two, item 2, 2021, 22, first budget workshop presentation. Steve, can you please provide us with your presentation?
Thank you. This is the first of our workshops, there are two workshops for the fiscal year 2021-22 budget, which will begin July 1st and end July 1st of 2021 and end June 30th of 2022. We're currently in the middle of fiscal year 2021, so these are very, we're eight months, nine months into the fiscal year, so we have at this point pulled together information and are working on next year's budget. So, next page, on the screen, okay, our agenda tonight will basically be to go through some budget projections, do some revenue assumptions and projections on the revenue, do address some expenditure issues, and then ask for any direction to staff from the council. Next page. Okay, this is, we're sharing this online, we'll also put it on our website, and we'll make copies available for the public should they be interested. So we're also streaming this, and again, we'll run this later should anybody be interested. This first one, these are very preliminary estimates, again, they reflect information, and Jim Gorizo, our finance director, is here to answer these specific questions. These projections reflect data through, actually, eight-month data, and they're a little, so it's a little early in their process, but we're trying to get it done and bring it forward to your attention. Overall, I want to start off by saying the city is in very good financial position, as we would have been anyway with the budget, but we have improved our position as a result of this budget year. So our revenue this year, we had just over 5, just under 5.1 million budgeted. We are projecting a little over 43,000 over that budget. So you'll recall, we somewhat projected a conservative budget. Our licenses and permits, our plan checks, and our local sales tax and our property tax transfer are all slightly above budget. So this is a very good position. You always want to under-budget your revenues and over-project your expenditures, if you will. So we hit the mark on that side. With respect... Was there a question?
I think Robbie's got a question.
Steve, does this include any government-infused money from CARES Act or any of that stuff? Either one of these numbers?
It will reflect CARES Act, dollar-for-dollar expenditures on CARES Act, but it does not reflect any of the federal relief act monies. So the CARES Act money that has been spent, it is reimbursed fully, so that would just reflect there. It is not counted any different to otherwise. We count it separately.
Thank you.
Councilman Colacott?
Yes. Last year, we under-budgeted, and does this build on that under-budgeting again, or so we've got a rolling under-budget of, or is that, does the under-budget, and we actually understand we received additional revenue than we had forecast?
Yeah, we had, this...
So, do we, have we, does this budget include recouping that money that we under-budgeted?
This reflects actual revenue receipts. So it requires recouping revenue, there is, we haven't, you know, we've only recouped what we received, there's no, there's no replacement revenue at this time to recoup. So as far as going back and regan, what we're, the property tax came in slightly above budgeted amounts, sales tax came in above budgeted amounts, and you see their licenses and permits, plan checks, and our local sales tax, all came in slightly above budget. So we did address it conservatively, but that's where we'd want to be, is slightly under, and so we, in sight of, given all the projections of loss of revenue with COVID, we came in very good position, actually. We didn't lose nearly what we thought we could lose, in fact, we did very well in some of the revenue sources. I don't know if that answers your question entirely, but I think I tried to get there.
Okay, go on.
Okay. With respect to expenditures, we had about 6.3 million budgeted, and you'll say, well, why did we budget 6.3 million and have only 5 million, 5.1 budgeted revenue? And that's because we had some carryover revenue that we were spending for our capital project. So you'll remember, we had, I don't remember the exact number, Jim can fill us in, but we had a lot of carryover revenue. Overall, expenditures are 800,000 under budget. This is largely about 50,000, 49,000, 50,000 in salaries and benefits. Our operating expenses, about 190,000 under budget, and our capital project and our expenses are 460,000 less than budget. You recall that because we came in, our bids for the street project came in under budget. So those monies will be carried forward, any unspent monies, as it works, gets carried forward into the next year as fund balance, so that will be projected as far as next year's opportunity for available financing. Next page, okay. If you look at the revenue assumptions for fiscal year 21, 22, we're projecting about a 3% increase in assessed valuation, that's based on county estimates. They're saying anywhere from 3 to 4. We've had higher growth than that over the last couple of years, so again, we're being conservative in our estimates. Our sales tax is 334,000, so that's an increase of 60,000 based, but you remember, we budgeted very, very conservatively on our sales tax last year. So it's about 95,000, but candidly, our sales tax revenues were extremely high, based on the number-one generator, and that's Ralph's, continued during the pandemic to produce higher-than-anticipated revenues for sales tax. So we generated very well. Our public safety, sales tax has increased about 12,000 compared to 2021 budget.
What is the public safety sales tax?
That's just a half cent that was measured, I forget what, do you remember what is measured, approved by the California voters?
Oh, okay.
Was it Prop 172? Prop 172 revenues that were approved by the voters in 9, no, I don't know the year. I don't even want to venture a guess.
I don't know the year.
But it was, it was a separate tax that's dedicated toward public safety, so part of a sales tax that the voters of California approved that we're the recipient of.
So I don't understand this. So it says, "Sales tax per avenue services is 334,000," but under the two bullets, there's only a 95,000 and an 8,000. What's, where's the difference coming from?
That's, okay, that's just, there's general, it's a combination of, there's multiple other revenue sources for sales taxes. So our sales tax revenue in total is 334,000, not an increase of 334,000, but you'll see the 334,000 is total sales tax. The increase, that's six, there's an increase that's reflective in the 34,000 of 90,000, 95,000 and 8,000. So if you'll go back, we didn't have, we had just about 103,000, so we had 231,000 budgeted in sales tax revenue this current year. We're budgeting 334,000 next year. We anticipate. So there's an increase of 103,000. Is that right, Jim? Is my math right?
Your math is right on.
Okay. So the 334 is not an increase, that's our total sales tax revenue. Does that answer your question?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Passport processing, we still have not resumed passport processing because the feds are not processing, and so local jurisdictions are not processing at this point. I would say if people, and we get a lot of calls about that, if people want to, they can still go through the feds up in LA, but local jurisdictions are not moving forward on this at this point. So we don't have the ability to process renewals for passports at this time. So we had about $6,400 in revenue that we will not anticipating for next year because we don't see a specific timeframe for them to resume. And I don't want to budget revenue that I'm not sure when we, when or if we're even going to get it. Later on, I know Councilman Pitts has asked about the COVID-19 pandemic, federal funding. We're going to address that as a total separate slide, and that's addressed later in our presentation. There's a lot of nuances to that that I'll share with you. So net change in our overall budget is about $200,000 of increased revenue for our budget for next year. So then this next slide, you go through machinations, but what this basically tells us is, if you follow it all down to the bottom line, what it really means is, you take last year's fund balance, the revenue, you take away our expenditures, you take away our, you add our revenue, projected revenue, you end up with a cash reserve, which we take away, we have our per's contribution, and we have designated reserves for special purpose. So in essence, we have 5.4 million available to spend in the coming year. We had 6.6, but again, that reflects a very large carryforward that we use for the 1.8 million dollar capital project. So that reflects a tremendous carryover that we don't have this year. Okay, next issue we'll start talking about, now we know we have slight revenue increases, we have a number of expenditure issues. This is the first time through, we're not voting on these, but we would like to hear input. If there's council member input on this, this would be certainly the time. So we've kind of grouped these into various categories. The first category is continuation of 2021 projects. So that would be current projects that we are, have been approved or we're moving forward on. So we'll start with the Villa Park Knowles. We have about 331,000, 332,000 budgeted for that. There's 181,000 of State Parks money, 75,000 of Villa Park's Community Services Fund, and the city council had approved 75,000 last year. So it's our intent to move forward and rebudget that for, or budget that for next year. Handicapped accessibility rants, we had 25,000 to do, and we're actually moving forward on several of those projects right now. Housing element update, we had a grant of 75,000 for lean, that's a mandate that we have to do, and that money will be spent, probably majority of it before October, as we finalize our housing element. That's due to State HCD by October 16th. On top of that, our next categories are the continuation of council priorities. These are identified council priorities that we are planning to continue in budgeting for our next year. First of all, sewer maintenance and pump station. As you recall, we have a special assessment that we have that's dedicated entirely. It was approved by the voters in 2000, early 2000s. We'll have 1.7 million dollars available for 622. These monies have to be dedicated entirely to pump maintenance and, I'm sorry, sewer maintenance and pumps, so we will have a major capital project completed for that, and that is continuation of upgrade or maintenance activities. Those monies are dedicated and accounted for separately. Street, we are budgeting, as you recall, our projects for street maintenance, every year we do, every other year, we take a two-year cycle. The first year, we do a design, the second year, we do a project, the actual implementation. We'll be budgeting 70,000 for a design engineering of the project for '22, '23, which actual completion in '22, '23. So for next year, we'll be putting in 20,000, 70,000, and we'll be coming to the council later this spring with the identification of the streets that we would recommend be addressed as part of that project. We're also, Councilman Colacott in the past has pushed, and I think we're continuing to rebudget, we, the council approved $125,000 contract this year, or a contract this year. We'll continue forward and continue slurry ceiling, 125,000 toward that end. Again, that's, and then we have a street pothole repair, which again, the councilman has, Councilman Colacott had recommended, we intend to move and budget another 40,000 as a continuation of that project. Every year, we use a combination of AQMD money, Air Quality Management District, and city money. We put 25,000 for DG, or decomposed granite trail repair. So every year, as to the rains, you'll recall, we got some runoff, and we lose a lot of that, so we're working, actually, we have an idea that we're moving forward this time, which is a different kind of DG that will last and is bonds differently. So I think there's a new way they're doing that. So the engineering, we're working through that right now to see if there's some sampling that we can try that would avoid some of the ravines and things you get when water runs down. So we're trying to do that.
Steve?
Yes.
So if we do end up eventually receiving that, the one part of the 1.9 trillion, you know?
Yes.
Budget, whatever they want to call it, and it has to go towards COVID, could we use some of that money to kind of supplement this trail repair, since it could be a health benefit for people getting out and walking and fresh air and whatnot?
Yes, we, initially, we think so, it's, as long as you have some sort of, I think you have to sort of have some link. We don't have Department of Treasury guidelines, like I said, at this point, so I don't really say for certain, but I'm inclined to think that you are, so my first reaction is yes, and I'd like to be able to include some, but I can't guarantee at this point. So we'll talk about why we, at this point, are going to limit and not, we're not talking about what our priorities there are because we can't really categorize and type of target them. So we will do a whole budget workshop separately once we get some. I think the feds are talking about now May, before the Department of Treasury gets out guidelines, so with no deadline, well, deadline being 2024 to spend it. So I think we've got some time to address that.
Okay, thank you.
Then there were other council priorities that were identified. There was state of the city at 10,000, winter wonderland at 15,000, and then we have council travel, none of which has been expended or almost none this year, but hopefully with the vaccinations and we're moving forward into the various recovery categories, we will have some travel or meeting conferences that we can reimburse for. So that's, those three items, we are intending to rebudget, given past priorities placed by the city council. You recall, the city council has, the next category is reserves and contingencies. You'll recall that the policy of the council set years, several years back, was that we are to, our target no more, cannot exceed our reserve no more than 50% of our general fund operating budget for our reserve as a general fund operating reserve. We have about 1.8 million. Next year, we would have about one, we would have the cap of about 1.9 million. To have a 50% reserve is a very good financial position for anything, so if you're looking to it, that's, that's not quite six months of operating expenditures, but it's a long movement in that direction. So that, having that, it puts us in a very good, positive position and consistent with the city council policy. For the last four years, we put in $100,000 into our Section 115 trust, and that's to address the potential CalPERS unfunded liability. We had, now have 400,000 in there. I think we provided separate reports, and we will again provide one later this year about that, but we are now recommending that we continue to provide that. We are seeing an escalation, a continued escalation of the unfunded actuarial liability by CalPERS, who does the independent calculation. I'll address that a little bit later, but we are within the 80% to 85% targeted funded level for our retirement system, for our share of the retirement system, which is about where we want to be. So I think that's, we're right where we want to be, but we need to, based on the anticipated increases that we're seeing from CalPERS, we're probably, we want to continue putting the money toward that direction.
Mayor?
Since we're now in the fifth year of this program, which appears to be going quite well, could we go back and ask our investment advisory committee to revisit this and recommend whether we should increase, stay the same, or decrease the amount of contribution? How are we doing and...
Sure. We, until, like I say, we, thank you, it's a very good question. We, the investment advisory board met, was it just last month? And they did recommend that we continue forward with another, and they would like to see another 100,000 at that level. The actual performance, Jim, do you know what the percentage is or where we're at?
We've got a really rough percentage, percentage, and it's through June of this year, which gives us three years, and we're basically getting about 6 and 3/4%. So comparable to CalPERS at this point, which is kind of where we want to be. Obviously, we'd like to be doing better, but at least meeting CalPERS.
So what I think the investment advisory board is recommending, continue it, but they may want to reevaluate. You have the option of investment strategies. You can go very conservative, you can go mildly conservative, you can go very risky, and I don't say risky, but you can go more aggressive, I think is how they refer to it. So the investment advisory committee has suggested that we continue, and they're looking and preparing a recommendation about what investment strategy we move into, because they may want to move to a more aggressive strategy, those, you know, based on potential returns that we should be or could be getting. But I think initially, they've, they're unanimous in their support for continuing to add money at the 100,000, they think it's a very, that's something that we should continue at that level.
Mayor?
Councilman Pitts?
Thank you, Mayor. Question, Steve. Why not add to it? If the investments are coming out with the returns that we're expecting or greater, why not add to it and put some additional funding in there to, you know, just keep us whole?
That's, that's a discretionary thing. At a minimum, we'd like to put in 100,000, but given that that's our current level, I think what we want to do is initially start with 100,000 and see where our budget puts us. We obviously don't want to sacrifice other projects and things that we, to put money in there, but I think that's a point well taken, and that's something that we can certainly, if that's the desire of the council, we can certainly up that amount. There's certainly no harm in that. Please keep in mind, once we do put this money, it's an irrevocable trust, so it is locked into that purpose. That's the only concern, I would say. Once you make that decision, you can't go back and say, oops, I want to pull it out. So we want to be very sure that we're moving in the right direction, but I think, Councilman, you make a great point. If we're getting the kinds of returns that we're hoping for, and we think we're getting so far, it's well worth our effort to, at a minimum, continue what we're doing and possibly increase at the discretion of the council.
And I, thanks. I can't see you, Robbie, so I don't know if you're trying to speak again or not.
Oh, I'm sorry. I don't know why you can't see me. I apologize.
Oh, because we have...
I think it's the way the screen is being set up on the presentation.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I just, so I'm glad you're speaking up, because I can't see if you're raising a hand or anything, so thanks for, thanks for letting me know, because we can't, we see the presentation, we don't see you.
Okay. Yeah, the, the other point I would like to make is, you know, some of the discretionary spending that's outlined throughout the budget, I'd like for us to consider, you know, moving away from some of that discretionary and moving things like winter wonderland to the foundation and things like that, so we could take those extra funds and put it into an account like this so where we can make, you know, a good return on our investment, also, you know, keep us whole for the future.
Well, sorry, are you done?
Thank you.
To talk about the winter wonderland really quick, I had approached the foundation, and at the time, they were not interested in taking it, so that's where we went with that. But I'm happy to ask them again if they would like to take it over, but, so that's why it's under ours right now. But I just want you both to know, because I know it's been brought up before, I did have a lengthy discussion with the foundation, and they were not interested in running it and paying for it, so, yes.
Given that the Community Services Foundation was organized about 20 years ago specifically for activities like winter wonderland, perhaps if we had a unified motion, you know, not right now, but at a future meeting, requesting the Community Services Foundation to reconsider, that might have a greater impression than just one of us councilmen asking.
Well, and for the record, when I was on the foundation, I brought up the winter wonderland as a member of the foundation, and there was no interest at that time either. So I'm happy to go back to the chairperson and have that discussion.
Well, what I'm suggesting is that maybe all the, the entire council, if we adopted a motion at a future meeting, that would have, you know, communicate a stronger request than just one of us council people, you know...
It's possible.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I'm not sure, maybe I misunderstood council member Pitts, but if we actually allocated this money in addition to the normal budget that we give to the Community Services Foundation and said, yes, we want this, this on our budget, but we all, we want to add it to their budget, would that be something that might bridge that gap, maybe?
It might, I don't know. It's a good conversation to have.
Second question. The reserves that we have for our 50% reserve?
Yes.
How much did we put into that last year?
You know, I'd have to check, but I think it was roughly around 50 to 60,000 dollars increase over the prior year.
So by putting another 50 to 60, that would, that's where it gets us back up to that 1.9?
The 50%, correct.
But not, there's some left over for that, so if we were talking about, now we've capped that, whatever's left over that we would have maybe put into that reserve, we might put into something like the, the CalPERS fund if we, if we're just talking about...
If you'd like us to, I mean, see, part of this is to get your input, so as we, we don't have the final budget number, so we're not balancing yet.
Sure.
Hopefully, in the next month, we're looking to try and get closer to a balancing thing, but if you're asking us to come back with a recommendation to possibly... thing. But if you're asking us to come back with a recommendation to possibly increase the CalPERS, we can do that. Obviously, it's up to the council to approve what you want to do with it, but, but I don't have a number to say, you know, but you're right, that it's a balancing thing, and one of the things we're balancing to is, we have a, you know, if we try and put this in reserve, if we try and put this and try and include these items in, we're going to end up with a number. At some point, we got to say, oops, we got to do this, or we got to do that to get to the right balance.
I like keeping things balanced. So, that's why I was, I was thinking, if we're, instead of putting 50,000 into it like we did last year, we can only put 40 to get to the cap. We have another 10 left over. That 10 goes into the CalPERS or something like that. That might provide a?
That's correct. That goes a little bit back to what Councilman Pitts was, was mentioning. There are some discretionary monies out there, basically, that you can reassign.
You can move those, and, and that's sort of why you see these parentheses. These are discretionary. You don't have to put those amounts in. We're starting with those amounts, and this is what we need to hear from you today. Like, nope, let's, in the balancing you're doing, let's put more there and de-emphasize that or take money from here and put it there. That's what we're trying to get to.
Last question. On the, the 50%, the reserve that we have, is that also earning a return on it?
Yes, that's, that's invested. So, the Investment Advisory Committee reviews our whole investment structure, and we have a, we have a laddered structure, a two-year ladder, two-year type of thing. So, we've really focused on trying to get our cash available that we need, so our cash flow issues. So, we address that, and everything else is extended out. So, we have investments. So, we're making money on it, on that as well. So, that's different, because that comes with the council. They can pull that money out and use it for general purposes, whereas if you put it into the Section 115, it's locked in there. It's a different kind of, it's a trust fund there versus a general fund reserve.
And when you say locked in, it's locked in for a specific purpose. So, this, the reserve is for when we have a, a budget lapse and we need to fill that back in. So, it's not locked like it's gone. It's locked as in it's going to be used for this purpose.
The Section 115 is literally locked in money. You're making an investment and you invite, you're putting that money aside. That's the Section 115. The general fund, the 1.9 million?
Yeah, sorry.
That is a open reserve, a general fund. At any point during the year, the city council can say, we want it, four fifths of you can say, we want to take money at your savings account, pull that money out for this purpose. It's intended, contingencies are typically available to address emergencies. So, for instance, when we had the Mesa Anderson storm drained, we used a lot of our reserve initially to have to make those repairs, because we don't have the normal cash available to do those types of things. So, it's intended to address emergencies. Emergencies such as a pandemic, if everything had shut down and we lost all our revenue. There was a discussion last year, for instance, the property tax being pushed off so that people didn't have to pay property tax, and that, remember that discussion was held at the state level. If that had happened, we're counting on property tax to run our budget. So, we would have had to use our reserve to fund our ongoing expenses. So, that's really what your, your general fund reserve is all about. So, to the extent that you reduce that amount, you reduce your ability to deal with any emergencies during the year, but it's not, you know, it, what level that is, there's no magic number. The council has said 50, it should not exceed 50% in the past. That's the general policy. Does that answer your?
It did. I was curious about if it would continue to grow was my biggest question, and but, and that's yes. And then, I think I got the rest of it. Thank you.
So, we actually, we, we budget an interest amount, anticipate it every year, into our anticipated revenues. So, there's an interest account that is budgeted, so we do take care of that.
Great.
Good? Okay. Hey, Robbie, would you mind, at your next foundation meeting, bringing up the possibility of the foundation taking over, running, and paying for the Winter Wonderland?
Sure.
Awesome. Thank you. Okay. Would you like to keep going?
Okay. So, then we have, as you recall, we have a contingency that we deal with 150,000. Those are things that come up during the year that I have authority up to $20,000 to approve. Those are minor things here and there, and, you know, replacing this, repairing that, or a light post gets hit or something like that. Those are the types of things that we deal with on those. Typically, the, a majority of that money does not get spent, but, you know, I report to if it does, and, and yeah, we do, we do use it in certain instances. That is a discretionary amount, and certainly, I don't have to have that in the budget. It just expedites the process of taking care of damages or replacing something or doing something that needs to be done. Okay. Next page. Okay. Okay. Now, we've got some contracted external mandates that we deal with. This is stuff, the, the last page, we had a lot of discretion. This is where we provide services or contract with services where we don't have as much, and they come externally. So, the sheriff at this point has given us a second estimate of a 6.5% increase of $123,000. That's the same basic level of services as is, and no changes there. So, that's where we are. That's a second estimate. And again, that's subject to revision. I'll probably come to the council in May with probably a third estimate, and the numbers have changed and moved around since the first estimate. We started over eight and a half, nine percent?
Eight point three, I think, was the first estimate.
Okay, eight point three. So, we're down to 6.5, based on some discussions Jim and I continue to have with them, about what constitutes their base level of service. So, that's, that's a discussion item.
And Steve, I want to add, that's, that's a total of 1.8 million dollars.
Yeah. So, that, our contract is 1.8, a plus change contract that we have with the sheriff for that. So, our 800 megahertz, that's the, the communication system we use. There's about a $640 increase. That's not a lot, but it's worth noting that there's an upgrade going on, and that's our share of the upgrade. So, they, you know, there, because there's a continual need to upgrade and maintain those types of things, and we share our contribution there. Animal control, this is an interesting sort of thing, because I've, I've had a lot of experience with this one and personally, and having been on the other side. The way that animal care works is they run their budget, and then they split their expenditures based on calls for service. So, their total overall county budget and expenditures for the current year is flat. They're literally not increasing anything. But what's happening, our calls for service are going up in Villa Park. So, our share of the flat amount, our share of the pie increases. So, that's what's happening. We're having a $13,000 increase based on our calls for service. So, what that is, and, and you don't necessarily want your people not, but if there, there's a runaway dog and they come to get it, or there's animals that they call animal care for and animal care comes out, that counts as a call for service. So, that's our contribution or increase there. So, from the county's perspective, they're holding their budget flat. They're not, not increasing anything or doing anything, but it's, their, their resources are being sent more to Villa Park as a percentage than they have in the past. And that total is, I think, what is their budget about one, I don't remember what the total budget was. It's 1.8, 1.9 million. So, it's a, it's a much larger number, but our share of it is, is, you know, about 27,000, and we're 13,000 in dollar increase. I'm not really comfortable with that. I feel like that's, I'm going back and actually looking with animal care, because I'm making sure the charge days for the shelter. So, if we have a dog that people say, hey, it gets picked up, and they don't pick it up for three days, we're charged for three days of service. So, if somebody gets a, a dog and doesn't, you know, doesn't, or, or their dog is picked up by animal care, if they go pick up the same day, that's a one charge, you know. So, there's a lot of like education and things like that that we want to continue to do. Animal care does report that we have the highest rate of pet licensing in the county. So, our pet licensing, people are paying their pet licenses, so there's no question there. So, it's not like we're not doing it. The question is, our calls for service. So, people are calling for wildlife or calling for any kind of, you know, they call, get a rattlesnake or whatever. They're calling, and they're getting a calls for service. Is those our discretionary calls? And that's, I want to see the nature of those calls, I'm working with animal care.
Is a call just a, just a telephone call where there's no response? Is that?
No, it's a, it's a response. If it requires a response. If somebody's calling and saying, hey, I've got a swarm of bees, that doesn't matter. They're not going to respond to that. But if it's, you know, if it's something not within their jurisdiction, they're, they're not going to respond. They do respond, anytime that this, the, the breakdown is based on actual responders. So, when you'll see a white, you know, truck come out from animal care, that's what they count for service.
So, do they respond to like coyotes?
They respond, because we've had nests of coyotes in backyards. So, we do have nests. So, it depends on the nature of the call. If, if a coyote is in something like that, they'll do it, or if a coyote is attacking an animal, attacking an animal or something, then yes. If it is, and it visibly seen, if it appears sick or something, yes. If it's just, they, somebody saw a coyote walking on the road, they will not respond, and that's because they're indigenous to the community, and that's considered reality of living in Orange County. So, they use, the coyotes, as you're familiar with, use the riverbed as sort of their superhighway. And there are some cities that actually pay to have, have them removed every year, and then coyotes refill. They just replenish, and so, so Villa Park hires an exterminator that every year traps them and euthanizes the coyotes, and with state law, under state law, and their guidance. And then every year, they have to go re, redo the same thing every year. So, they have a standing contract to euthanize X number, and they go back and redo it. So, I, I, it's, it's not necessarily a good call. It's, I think it's a waste a lot of money, because you just end up with another one, right, replacing the old one. So, that's not, but it's, it's, it's a, it's a response, and it's a proactive response that we get a percentage bill for.
Just a clarification, I believe Feather Hill is their superhighway.
Okay. Probably. Now, what they do is they go down, and, and you'll hear, they come down from the, and they're seasonal, and if they see coyotes in midday, that's potentially a sign of, of a sick type of thing, because coyotes are nocturnal typically, and that's what they'll look for. So, I mean, I, having spent a lot of time on this, if, you know, if people call in and say, hey, I need somebody here right now, and they go, animal care goes out, and there's nothing they can do about it, we're going to get charged for the time anyway.
So, if the sheriff happens to be out and calls, is it the physical location of the coyote, because it's in Villa Park, will get charged, or is it a resident?
Yeah. The sheriff does not deal with coyotes. The sheriff immediately calls animal care, and animal care deals with them. If animal care responds and has an active presence, then we're getting charged.
Okay. So, it's a fact that it's in Villa Park?
It's in Villa Park.
And then, pardon?
It's in Villa Park. It would be the physical presence in Villa Park.
And then, it's really odd that I've, so we are currently paying to have coyotes euthanized?
No, we're not. We are not.
Okay. I was gonna say.
I'm saying, Yorba Linda does.
Their population dynamics and genetics are such that when you, when you decrease the size of their population, they, they have more births.
They expand to fill.
Yeah. So, it would be a waste of money.
So, when Yorba Linda does do that every year, and that was sort of, and they did that because the residents felt they wanted to do something about the number of coyotes. So, that's their answer. But it, it is a?
Counterproductive.
It's counterproductive, and you may end up with more than you actually had before. So, I would never recommend it.
Somebody typing? I hear typing. Is that somebody typing?
No.
Sorry. I hear click, 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 click. Is it just me? Okay.
Quick question. You had, you said something about when one of our residents' pets is boarded?
At, if they're picked up, and if they call, typically, if they're licensed, they'll call the, they'll call the owner.
Right.
And if they haven't left the city, and they can take them back to the home, the home will, they return them right away to the, to the owner. If, however, they're unavailable, they're not licensed, or there's no license on their tag, you know, in other words, they're picked up.
Right.
And there's no chip that they can find, so they're not chipped. So, the animal care officer carries field recognition, so they can do the chip and recognize them. But if they can't get ahold of the owner, they take it to the Orange County Animal Shelter.
Okay.
And it stays at the animal shelter in Irvine. And we're charged for every day the animal is down there.
Why isn't the pet owner charged for that?
They are, but as a percentage of time, we're charged for a percentage of time taking it back there. So, it counts as a service day. So, they have a set rate that's not a full cost recovery for the owner, and that's the county's fee schedule that they use.
Interesting.
Too bad we can't get reimbursed for that.
I am shocked. I thought that would be up to the pet owner to pay for.
It's pretty expensive right now. If you, if you have your animal down there, you don't want to have to pay. It's, it's hundreds of dollars just to redeem for one day. But it is, you're right. I, I agree. And that's one of the issues we had. It's a, it's a cost recovery issue, and the county's schedule does not allow for a full cost recovery.
Do we have a lot of?
That's what I'm working on. I've asked for that data. I've asked for the data from the, from the animal care, because I want to know what's field days versus what's shelter days.
Okay. And will you present, or do you think you'll have that in time for the next?
I, I hope to have some more information from them. I'm meeting with, hopefully, this, possibly this Thursday, the Director of Animal Care for the county.
Okay, thank you. Robbie, did you have anything else?
No, thank you.
You'll recall that in, several years ago, we had a contributor, we had a, the new shelter they built, and we have a 10-year contribution of about 5,600 dollars per year, and that's, and there's no change from the current year. The next item you're going to see on there is CJPIA. We had an insurance premium increase. So, they're anticipating our, our premiums, just like when you have an accident, your rates are going to go up, your premiums are going to go up. They're anticipating our premiums to go up about 19,000 next year. So, after three years, the way they depreciate it, our rates will go back down. But for the next couple of years, we're going to be paying back because of the settlement amount for the current, there's a, there's a reimbursement depreciation that they use. So, CJPIA gave us an estimate of about 19,000 that we'll have to incorporate into our budget for next year, which is the largest of the three-year increase we'll see. Then it diminishes after year three. We do, every year, we're part of the North Spa, as you recall, and Mayor Miles is part of the shelter, the bridges at Kramer thing. We have a deal with them to dress our homeless. We, we put 7,500, and that was part of the federal settlement. That was two years ago. We help provide, for costs of shelter, of the shelter in Placentia and the one in Buena Park. So, in the event that there's a homeless person needing a place to be, they can't do anything unless there's an opportunity to put them in a shelter bed. So, the sheriff could do nothing and cannot enforce any, the San Jose decision, it could not enforce any vagrancy type of thing or loitering if we didn't have an opportunity for them to go somewhere else. So, this is our contribution toward that every year. So, the sheriff does have occasionally, just last week, we had somebody they dealt with homeless. So, there, we have our share every now and then.
And this is very reasonable price?
Yeah. No, it's, it's an insurance policy. It candidly, and allows our deputies to fully engage and, and deal with anybody they might come across that's homeless in the city. So, they have the resources they need to get them to places. And, and that's really what you want. You don't want them just to move on. You want them, so they're not landing some other city and returning or going to some other city and becoming a problem. You want, you want them to, to reintegrate. So, this is, it, it's a good move along those directions. So, the North Spa has two shelters, plus Anaheim shelters, that we also use as, as extra shelter. We do not have election next year, so we had budgeted $10,000, and we actually spent about $10,000. I think our cost is, what is it? Zero? I thought we got some charge for the general.
It may have been just a, a minor amount.
Okay.
Basically, the $10,000 is savings.
But for the end, for the expenditure next year, we won't be spending $10,000. However, conversely, the year after, we'll have another election, and we will be spending money. So, this is kind of a cyclical type of thing. This will be the down year. Technology, we have the next category. We have PC upgrades and replacements. Typically, we budget about 10,000. We typically replace one by one, one or two computers and monitors and screens in each of our offices, as you, you know, based on, on technology improvements, laptops and things like that, just sort of a replacement schedule that we use. Website enhancements, we do a number of things, and we're linking as, as we speak. We've got the, you can get your business license online, your, where you can pay your, you can room rental and those kinds of things, and you can get a building permit online. So, we have website enhancements that we continue to use, and that's 10,000 we're budgeting for it. One of the things that we've, Jim and I have been talking about, and this is an issue that we've been working at, we last invested about five, five or six years ago, a financial system. But it's not an integrated financial system that doesn't work with our budget. So, for instance, when Jim and Alyssa do our accounts payable, it does not link into the budget. So, they have to go back and re-data enter all of this stuff into a whole new system to create a budget. So, it is a very time-consuming for a one-person department. It is a lot of effort that Jim has to go through to pull our budget together. So, there are opportunities for a, a budgeted or financial, financial system, and we would like to do. And what that would do, we'd like to be able to get, Jim and I would both like to be able to get a budget system that if any general member of the public wanted to go in from a transparency purpose, it'd be on our website. They could look at any outline item, what we're spending on it, how we're spending that money, et cetera. So, this is something that we've, we've, Jim and I have talked to several people, and right now, we haven't proceeded with it, because it's, it's a cost prohibitive. But potentially, this is money that could, this, we could get this paid by our federal relief act money. So, we're thinking maybe that's something we'd like to at least consider as part of our budget for next year. You recall, last month, the city approved, the council approved a technology tech fee. This charge is going to generate about 12,000. So, we're going to put that in there. That's not to replace existing computers. That's to replace the, the technology that we're now having here, and, and we're using for public information purposes. So, that money is, is going to be something that we budget for, and as we need it, we'll put money there. Okay, next page. So, there's additional salaries, employee benefits. I, you know, we're starting with, we have, we didn't, as you recall, we gave no raises or no increases last year. One, we were certain we didn't get much, you know, but then we did well, much better in our budget, so we actually turned out okay. We would like, we'd like to have a, start with a merit pool, and I, certainly, that number is flexible based on council direction. But we'd start with a 5% merit pool and be able to adjust accordingly on an individual. to adjust accordingly on an individual basis by basis. So if you translate that's out, it's two and a half percent per year that we would get, uh, at most anyone would get and that would be something that we would address. Uh, again, that's something that we'd, I'd like to include as a recommended action.
Steve?
Yes?
So you're saying normally we would approve a two and a half percent in?
Well, I, no, I, I would have improved something. In the year before, I think I was a three to four percent increase, four percent for the previous year. So I was just saying, if you averaged out over two years, because we didn't give any raise last fiscal year, so employees here.
It wouldn't be more like an eight percent increase? If it was four percent each year?
No, no, I'm saying five percent total.
Right.
So, and we didn't give anything last year, so if I go back, so there's zero increase last year.
Okay.
So if I gave five percent, sort of bringing them up from two years ago, they would have gotten basically two and a half percent over the last two years.
I see. But if we wanted to say four percent for the last two years, this should be increased to eight?
Yes. If you wanted to put more in, yes, I-
I'd like to put more in there.
Okay, we certainly can do that. I'm just starting at a base level.
Okay.
We've had property tax growth about three to five percent and that's where we were kind of aiming at, somewhere where we had property tax growth that we were consistent with our revenue growth and we're somewhere in that range.
I, I think it's great that we didn't, at the time, think that we could afford, uh, merit increases, but I think given the very reasonable and, and responsible management of our money, that those increases could be given now retroactively as a, an additional fund. That's my recommendation as one person. Uh, if you guys want to weigh in?
Uh, well, I, I, I too agree that the management of the, of the money, um, has, you know, had good stewardship. My concern is, um, from what I'm hearing, that we're not out of the, you know, pandemic yet, so, um, I just have a concern about us being a little bit too free and liberal with, with, with that, uh, merit pool. I, I like the idea of that five percent, um, seeing as it would have been a two and a half for the two years, but we can obviously, you know, get other people to weigh in on that as well. I agree, they definitely deserve it, but I just, I still am a little on the conservative side as far as, you know, we're hearing about these new strains and whatnot and maybe that's something we look at for next year's budget when we hopefully have enough people vaccinated and, and if there is another surge, it won't impact like it has, but.
I guess I'm thinking zero percent for a year is, seems like pretty harsh maybe that given that we probably could have given an increase last year. So if we give something for last year now, then we should also-
Oh, no, I, I agree, we should give something. I just, I don't know if the five to eight percent, but that's something, you know, Bob or Robbie can weigh in too.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um, you know, I, I, I would look at merit increases simply from the standpoint of retention bonuses or something like that. We're, we're in the, we're in the throes of, of losing someone to a higher paying job or something else, then, then Steve should be given some discretionary funding to allow him to do a retention bonus or something like that, to have the employee stay. But I'm, I'm not necessarily for just giving everybody an increase and, 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 uh, doing that at this time. I think we've all got to tighten our belts and be careful about what we're doing, but at the same time, we don't want to lose, uh, some really good employees if, unless we can help it.
So I would just offer that is, and thank you, councilman. I think that's what I was thinking when I say merit pool versus a CPI or, or increase along, so it's not across-the-board increase, this is based on workload or merit. And, and, you know, we do have some bright young minds, um, Carlos don't hear this, but we have some bright young minds here that we, I'd like to, you know, and are, are, very candidly, I can't fault them if they go and say, hey, I can go get something better elsewhere. I, I think that's something we ought to keep that in mind. And I agree with you, uh, councilman, that we, that's why I refer to as a merit pool. It is not across the board in any way, shape or form. Nobody's guaranteed anything, but if their workload and things address it, I think I'd like to be able to have that pool of money to tap into.
Bob, do you have anything you want to offer on that?
Not on that, no. Uh, can just, I'd like to, uh, hear the, or discuss it when we've got Vince and everybody here.
Um, I'll, I'll add, I'll add that, um, as an employer myself, when you find the right people and it works and it jives, you definitely want to do what you can to, uh, keep that momentum going. So, um, yeah, I agree.
So, let me move forward, continue?
Um, one thing I'd like to bring up, um, we're all, all of us councilmen are relatively, you know, we're only here for a fairly short time, so we don't have a long-term perspective.
Get into the mic.
Okay. All of us councilmen are, uh, uh, you know, have a relatively short tenure here. You know, I'm, I'm the most senior, uh, councilperson in terms of time. I'm a little over six years. So I've, um, but, uh, you know, the city's been going on for a period of time. When we reached, we were originally incorporated in 1962, uh, the whole idea was to be absolute bare bones. Um, no parks, no sidewalks, no streetlights, so forth. Let's see how we can get by, uh, with, uh, the bare minimum because we, you know, the, uh, the residents back then wanted to, uh, limit, um, the development to just residential. They found that couldn't work out, so we do have a town center, so we do have some sales tax revenue, but it's pretty limited. And my understanding is that Villa Park has the, uh, one of the lowest, if not the lowest, uh, per capita, uh, tax revenue of any municipality in the county, but we make it work because we're very frugal with, um, our expenditures. One thing that's, uh, that I've noticed over the past 25 years is that it appears that our administrative staff in the council and city hall has been, uh, increasing. Now, um, brings to my, the article that was in the Register around 1995, where the then part-time city manager was holding up his briefcase in the photo and he said, I'm holding all the city's business in my briefcase here. And, uh, as I recall from the article, at that time, he said he had, uh, he was half-time uh, city engineer, he's retired businessman, or not city engineer, city manager. Um, and then he had a, uh, full-time receptionist slash city clerk and that was our administrative staff. Uh, since I've been on, uh, council for the past six years, I've seen the, uh, some increase in staffing as well. What I'd like to see is, uh, staff would come back and let us know, you know, what, what have, has been the increase in full-time and part-time employees since, you know, if you can go back to 1995, if you've got that information. And also, um, what has been the, uh, the annual expenditures for, uh, staff salaries over that period of time? And what has been the, uh, the change in our tax revenue? Not all sources of revenue because we get, uh, different state subventions and, you know, one-time deals and so forth, but what has been our, uh, tax, you know, sales tax and property tax revenue growth during that period of time? And how does our staffing increase balance out against the, uh, the revenue? Is our staffing cost increasing greater, at a greater rate than our, uh, tax revenue? Um, it's good information for us to have so we can see just where are we and where, where have we been going and do we want to continue down this path or do we need to, uh, take a different path to maintain, um, you know, what our city, our whole, our city approach has been, uh, over the past sixty years? So this would be good information. I'd like to have this information so I can better understand what these numbers mean to us, uh, uh, in terms of this budget cycle as well.
So I like comparables. I think comparables are great. I don't know if, uh, city staff really necessarily has to go back 26 years to do that, especially since so much has changed since then, but I, I do, I can appreciate what you're saying as far as going back, um, perhaps the last 10 years with, um, some of the numbers and, and data that you're requesting. Uh, I think that would be much more applicable than 20-something years, especially prior to any of us even, um, being on council here.
Well, um, I know I'm the only resident or councilman that was a resident in 1995, but, uh, the, uh, the city has not grown since 1995. We've not, uh, you know, we might've added a, a handful of houses since then, but it's, uh, we're basically the same city. Our population, I believe, has actually decreased a little bit since, uh, since then. So, um, you know, given things are, in the city have been pretty static, uh, you know, what have been the changes in our staffing levels and what are the changes in our, uh, staffing costs? And how does that relate to our, uh, our revenues? Now, if we don't, you know, if the information is available, it should be a fairly, uh, simple exercise to, you know, for even an intern to, to put that information together. Uh, but if it's a shorter period of time, fine, but let's, you know, we're, you know, what's been going on? Where, what has our direction been? And are we really aware of that?
I think you'll find that maybe our city hasn't necessarily grown since we can't, but I'm sure there are, um, growth other ways from size of families to extended families, uh, people remodeling some of those residents that have been here for 30-something years or redoing their homes or-
If you look at the population statistics, uh, you know, that's, that information's readily available and, uh, yeah, the, the, um, population, uh, currently is lower than it was previously. Um, and, uh, part of it is because there, uh, there has been a significant decline in the number of school-aged children, but that'll come out in the 2020 census.
Yep.
I would just offer that we need to keep in mind salary levels and who, the status of levels. I have two interns that are working here that are working at $20 an hour for 20 hours with no benefits. Um, those are considered staff here and we are not giving them any raises or anything like that. I know personally, I'm making less than half of what an average city manager makes in the city, so comparable, but I have the same duties of any other city manager elsewhere. So I think there's a lot of comparables. It's a, it's a calculation you have to sort of lay into it. We contract, so I think we have a city engineer, but that city engineer is a contract engineer. We have a planner, that's a contract planner. So the number of actual staff is, is, is not all that large. I think we have eight full-time people or eight, eight staff.
We're up to nine, but I think there's five.
Five full-time staff.
Five full-time staff.
And I think that's sort of, you know, where we're at on that situation, so I mean-
I was, I was not asking for the, uh, the professional, the, uh, contract staff, the planner and the engineer, um, but if we could, uh, know what the administrative staff, you know, what the numbers are of part-time and full-time and what the salary levels were and not, and I, I wouldn't ask for a comparison against other cities, just, you know, what are, you know, what are we spending and how's that relate to the amount of revenue, uh, growth that we've had?
Well, I, I would, I would offer to differ there because I think what other cities are paying is relevant because if I can't retain somebody, it doesn't matter how many positions I have. If I can train them and send them somewhere else, that's great for the other city, but it's not great for us because you need continuity and you need people running that, that, that know what they're doing and have been working here. So I have full, five full-time, or five positions here. Of those five, two are public works people that work out in the field full-time. So I have three people in the office. If you were to staff a reg, I do this nine to five or eight to five every day, coverage and counting day off, I mean, you barely have enough on times to have one person here. So we use supplement with intern, 20-hour and eight-week interns, um, at $20 an hour. So I think we, you, the level of the staff and how you use them is really relevant here. Uh, I don't think we are in any way, shape or form trying to add staff. I think I'm also, I'm concerned, I think, um, I think what we're trying to do is keep the people here that we have and I certainly be happy to provide any data information, but I think you also run the risk of you find out you're underpaying people and I'd be the first in line to tell you that.
Yeah.
And I'm going to, right, right up front. I mean, that's sort of-
That's not part of my, uh, a salary comparison or a, a salary study is not what I'm asking for, just what are, what, what is our staffing levels, uh, part-time and full-time? And, uh, how does the, the increase, uh, the increases in, uh, staff and compensation? How does all that compare with our revenues? That's all. I'm not asking to expand it beyond that. Just a, you know-
I'm obligated to provide a full context and I will provide you the full detail and I'll be happy to do that like you ask. I'll be happy, but I think you need to keep that bigger picture in mind because it's not a function, you, nobody's talked about state mandates. In 1995, the level of state mandates is far less than the, the state mandates here that were required now. For instance, every year we have to provide a state, a summary of our expenditures. We have to provide CAFR. We have to provide a salary detail that, of everybody's expenditures and everybody's salaries expenditures and things to the state. So we have requirements that just simply didn't exist over the years and I recognize that, that may or may not exceed our revenue growth, but in reality is the mandates are the mandates and the required work responsibilities are the required work responsibilities. So, uh, I certainly will be happy to provide the information, but I think you need to see a big picture and that would be my, my suggestion is that we don't look at this and say, well, revenue's not growing, so we don't need staff increases or staff costs. You're going to have staff costs that's may exceed and it may not be reasonable. It may not be, I mean, but I don't make the laws in Sacramento. I don't tell us that I have to provide smog certificates that we never had to do before or I have to do this or that or whatever. I have to provide those reports. So I think those are, are essential requirements that I have to fulfill and as my professional recommendation, I have a staffing level. If we want to talk about staffing level, which is I think what you're going to and the direction, let's have that discussion up front. Let's not have a discussion to say, you know, I'm, you know, because that's a different kind of discussion that we're having here. If you're talking about is, are we warranted in the amount of, we're spending as miniature? If, if, that's certainly a policy. If you want to say we're not going to exceed, we certainly can say that. But I would offer that you need to look at the whole discussion in context. It's not just has staff costs grown relative to our revenue growth? I think there's a, another reality to it and there's a lot of, a lot of, uh, elements to that. So I would offer that and I know that that's not necessarily what you're looking for, councilman, but I think that's something that, uh, in my professional opinion, you, you would not be able to run an organization if you didn't look at that full thing. You may say, we're going to go back and reduce our levels, staffing levels, but then you're not going to fulfill state mandates. That maybe you tell me which one you don't want us to do, those kinds of things. And I'm, I'm fully prepared to deal with that, but I want to make sure that we all understand there's responsibilities and things we have to do.
Mr. City Manager, I'm not asking, uh, at this point in time to increase or decrease any staffing levels or, um, you know, anything else, just what, what is the, trying to get an understanding of how has staffing grown? How has, uh, how has the, um, cost of staffing, uh, adjusted and how is it adjusted relative to our, uh, our revenue? Uh, just to put in context, where are we now in terms of our staffing? We have increased staffing, um, you know, how does this relate to what our, uh, our revenue, uh, increase, increase has grown or our, our revenue has grown? I think it's, uh, it's important for us to understand what we're doing in the context of what we're doing.
Can't we just do a comparable with our payroll cost?
Yeah, I'm happy to provide that, but-
Not asking, that's, I'm not asking for a comparable with Alameda's or anybody else, just what is our cost?
No, no, I didn't say Alameda's. It's our own payroll cost. So we could take a look in comparable and do our comparables of what our payroll costs last year and our payroll costs the year before and our payroll costs the year before. Is that what you're, is that, because I'm not understanding what your goal is with trying to get a comparable unless you want to see how much we're spending for-
What, what is, you know, what, how has, uh, how has, uh, the number of our, the amount of, how has the number of our administrative staff fluctuated over whatever period of record we've got? What, how has, uh, our revenue changed over that period of time? Recognizing that our city, city has been, you know, static, you know, so, and what is our city, city has been, you know, static, you know, so, and what is causing these increases? So, you know, that, that would be another discussion, but really, what are the, what are the numbers? What are the costs? How does that relate to our, the changes in our revenue?
I don't know if it's that simple of a comparable, considering there are so many different factors that go into...
Oh, yeah, but we can discuss that.
Well, but you're directing staff to do something, so let's make it really clear and concise.
Some basic information.
So why not just pull up some comparable payroll over the course of years and just, it'll say how many employees we have?
Yeah, exactly. That's what I'm asking is, what is, you know, how many employees did we have in, in 2005, for example, in 2006, 2007, and so forth? What was our staff, staffing costs, you know, administrative staffing costs over that period of time? And how did our, how did our revenue increase over that period of time? Are they going at the same rate? Are they going at a different rate?
They're probably going at a different rate, but that sounds, I think it's just been complicated, but it sounds like it should be a pretty fairly...
Very simple.
Yeah, if I can add, I think that's something we could do, but I think you have to take the full context and look at our total expenditures against our total revenues and not just staffing.
Right, right.
Because you're going to see, yes, you may see growth in, in your, your salaries and benefits, but you're also going to see a growth in all your other costs. For instance, law enforcement, I mean, law enforcement, basically, I think we've been looking at, and I was actually just doing some comparisons for the last 10 years. Law enforcement's averaged over 6% growth.
Yeah, and that's not part of the administrative cost.
True.
It was just, what is the cost of our, you know, front office staff versus, you know, versus our revenue and the number of front office staff?
Right, but, but if you're looking at the revenue component, basically, some of that revenue growth, if you have revenue growth, basically, it's got to go to pay these other expenditures.
Absolutely.
Okay. I think we can move on.
Okay. So we do have some adjustments we made. We had changed workload reassignments. We had the admin analyst and our finance director. We are addressing their salaries that we had brought them in on a probationary type of thing, and I've moved them up to where they were originally, they're not, I don't think either one of them are making as much as their predecessor even still. So we're, I moved them up with the adjustments mid-year, and that's a $7,000. The intern adjustment, one of the things we're talking about is we have a increased number and we're, our housing element is increased number of ADUs and the processing of those. So we have a significant amount of additional work, and one of our goals has always been to 30 days to respond. So one of the things we, you're doing is talking about using an intern to help us process administratively, how we process ADUs and whatnot. So our plan checks. So we're talking about a 20-hour part-time planning intern to assist in our plan check. So that's our recommendation. Anyway, so that's, that's the intern adjustment. And the, we are moving up to, we're probably close to 20, 15 to 20 ADU some mills a year now, and that's a significant increase of the past, and that does require, just processing those requires time. City manager's salary is flat. We're not, I'm not recommending any adjustment there. The CalPERS rate adjustment, there's a contribution rate increase. The unfunded actuarial liability is going up 16,000. This is where the state estimates the amount that you would have to pay out. It's, it's sort of an actuarial assumptions that, you know, people live X amount of years, they're paid out X amount of dime, et cetera. And the staff's out, effective that is 16,000 un, and actuarial and 4,000 affects our staff salaries. The rates themselves are actually decreasing, but the unfunded liability is, is increasing. So that's a, a contribution rate that's calculated by CalPERS. So again, we are 80 to 85% funded, which includes, if you include our Section 115, that's where we're, they were recommended and we planned, and that's what the Investment Advisory Committee has all recommended and concur that that rate is where we need to be for a funding level for our CalPERS. Move to the next page. This is where we're going to talk about the COVID-19 pandemic-related funds. One of the things we have is a $21,000 grant, the Phase 3 that were given to us by Third District. We must spend by June of this year. We took, we have permission to consolidate that with our federal relief funds. And I think what, what is important there is we have till June. We, we have a process in place. We can distribute these very quickly. So it's just a matter of deciding how we want to do that. We have zero amount of FEMA reimbursements pending. They have paid us zero, I think, as far as the whole pandemic at this point, and they pretty much denied everything we submitted. We submitted about $35,000 of claim and received nothing. Federal relief funds will receive about $1,001, estimated. You see the exact number there. That's based on a calculation done by the League of, Nationwide League of Cities, and that number will actually vary when Department of Treasury does it, but they basically base it on a number of population figures. It'll be distributed in two increments, 2021 and 2021, 2022, and that'll be 50% each, and we must spend it by 2024. There are definite spending restrictions. Department of Treasury is issuing guidelines. They're, they're estimating May at this point. It must be COVID-related activities. It's interesting, they're allowing sewer, water, broadband infrastructure or eligible expenses. They are specifically saying no roads and their replacement, and it can replace lost revenue due to COVID. We don't have the ability to indicate any revenue lost as a result of COVID. So we're not, so what they're meaning is like Disney, revenue, revenue in Anaheim where they lost transit occupancy tax or hotel tax, they lost that in a number of cities, and they can show where they're significantly down. We don't show that reduction. Our sales tax is actually higher than it was pre-COVID. So we don't have an ability to, to backfill and say we're backfilling revenue that we otherwise lost. So we don't have that ability. The, the roads, the administration is proposing, you're seeing it in discussed now, another whole infrastructure is something like Build Back, I don't know the acronyms or whatever, BBA or something along those are discussion. It's a $3 trillion act that will be focused partly on roads. If that were the case, we would be receiving some separate infrastructure money on top of the 1.9 or 1.1 that we'll be receiving. So we do not have, at this point, we do not have specific details on how to develop a spending plan, and I think it's very premature for us to go ahead. We have a three-year window to spend the money and how we do that. So I think what would I like to recommend, and I have said this before, that we have, we have a special city council meeting when we know the details, and we can then get some public input and say, what, what's the community want, the types of things that are COVID-related within guidelines? Because I think the worst-case scenario is you tell everybody and build expectations that we're going to do this and the other thing, and it turns out we can't do any of it. And, and that is not uncommon because we did actually, as you recall, have to return $35,000 of CARES Act money because of the way they restricted the money. It had to be spent for specific purposes. So a number of other Orange County cities were in the same boat. Seal Beach returned money, I think Los Alamos returned some money. Some of these cities, because you couldn't, you had to spend on specific COVID-type of things, and since you're contract cities or whatever the case may be, you couldn't come up with it. One of the things too, I would just be careful, is all of this money's going to have to be audited, and somebody at some point, if you over, if you spend the money, you have to attest that it's being spent for that purpose. They have the right to reserve. In fact, they are going to reserve and require auditing of it. And when they come back at some point, if it's not spent in the way they deem appropriate, then you have to repay it. So I think we don't want to be in the boat where we're being overly aggressive in there. So that's one thing. I don't want to push the envelope until we know what the envelope even looks like at this point. So I'm being very cautious, but I have a three-year window. So I don't think there's a rush to say, let's spend it. Let's, let's get the ideas in mind, and we can go from there. So the, the pandemic monies are really nice, but it's a windfall, and how you spend that windfall, it's a one-time windfall. So you're probably looking at this money not being replicated. So my recommendation at, at a minimum would be this not be spent on ongoing type of things that you can't support, because in whatever number of years when the money runs out, you're going to have to either replace it with general fund money, or you're going to have to cut the programs or cut whatever you wanted, you were paying for it. So I wouldn't recommend anything that would be requiring ongoing expenses unless you had a plan for sort of like this be seed money that eventually is replaced by some other revenue source. So the, the federal monies, I know, again, I've said before, some of the cities are moving forward on making planning activities. I'm not in favor of doing that. I think you're spending, they're spending some time that may actually just be simply a waste of time. And I'll, I'll be very candid about that. There are some cities that have lost a lot of revenue, and I cite Anaheim, they've lost with the Disney thing. So they're replacing revenue. So they can deal with that revenue loss and know it's a safe assumption they're going to be able to replace it. And they lost millions of money, I mean, millions that Disney have, you keep in mind that Disney's, Disney's been closed for a year and all the hotels around there and all that revenue. I want to say they've got like $400, $500 million. So what cities like those are doing is they are planning to borrow money and then repay it with the federal money. So they're borrowing money right now to keep their doors open and repay it with this money. That's a different ballgame than we've ever been. Our revenue is actually in excess of our prior year. We are in, I mean, I almost feel guilty when I listen into some of the other city managers. We, because we're property tax-based, don't, didn't face the kinds of things that these other cities are facing. So we are in a much, and we have reserves and things, so we didn't tap into our reserves. Some cities used reserves just to keep the doors open. So that's where their COVID dates, so that's why some of these cities are moving forward now and putting that. Some cities have used money for COVID-type of things and, and additional COVID activities, which we haven't had to or aren't moving into. So we're, we're in a very fortunate position, but I think we need to be cautious in moving forward there and, and keep in perspective the rules of the game, because when they do, somebody comes knocking, I do, having dealt with federal auditors, when they turn around and say you've spent money that they don't think is appropriate, there's no appeal process. They're the judge advocate, and they'll just tell you right there, this is what you're paying, and they'll send you a bill and your, your payment due. So I don't want to ever put the, the City of Villa Park in that position. So that would be my concern there with the, with the federal monies. I'm always very cautious with federal monies because how we interpret things is not how, necessarily how somebody from Washington's going to interpret how we spend monies. And that's always, I, I've been there, done that, and, and have dealt with HUD, state, federal, I mean, and, and some of these entities, and it's, it's an unfortunate experience after return monies. Anyway, so that is where we are. Those are the things we're looking at right now. As I look back right now, I can see a number of issues that you want us to proceed. If I look through here, give me a second. I know we, that we, that Councilman Pitts is going to talk about the Winter Wonderland with the Villa Park Community Services Foundation. I know that there's a discussion about the merit increases. I know there's a discussion of staffing costs versus revenue costs increases over the, over the incremental years. And I think those are the types of things that we're, if there's something else I'm missing?
No, there's something else I thought of, though. So because of COVID, I think everyone has, you know, there's good and there's bad, right? So I think that a lot of people have benefited from not having to travel to go to meetings and whatnot. So I know that our budget as a council for our travel is 18,500, I believe, and we didn't touch it at all last year. And I really don't know if we need all that. I think it was $3,700, $3,700 per person. I don't particularly think that we need that. I know that my first year on council, as well as Mayor Pro Tim Zemmerman, we didn't go through that much at all. So, and I don't believe in the borrowing or sharing, like I get to use some of yours if you don't use it. I think we decided that a few council, a few years ago, where there was no more sharing, you had your allotment and that was it. But I don't see why, especially with the technology and that a lot of, a lot of these, you know, meetings can be held via Zoom, that we should reduce that at least to like 2,500 per council person. So you're only looking at, I think, 12,500 for that budget versus the 18,500, because I don't see us going anywhere soon yet either. But it is good to have in case there, you know, is, is something. So, but I don't know if that also would require amending that travel policy, because I think it's written in there in the travel policy as well.
The actual number is not, it's just the policy about not spending it.
Okay. So that's my thought, is we don't need the 18,500. We haven't for a while. But it is important to be able to have representation at different locations and meetings and whatnot. So I'm not saying get rid of it, but I just don't think we need that full amount. Not that saving, you know, $6,000 or whatever is going to be a big deal, but just from a practical standpoint. That's my thought. And I agree about waiting until we have the guidelines to be able to have an in-depth discussion on that, that federal funding, the 1.1. I think that's a great idea. I really appreciate, you know, the conservative approach and the patient approach. And I know that the two of you both worked on this a lot and long hours, and appreciate both of you putting your time and energy into this. Counsel, do we have any other comments or, yes?
I had a quick question. On the Villa Park Knowles, this, the, the number that was in here is what was allocated last year, correct?
The 70, yes. The 75,000 is the only city money that's in, that's in their budget. Everything else is externally.
So there's no additional budget that we're providing to this other than what we already approved?
Yes.
And do we have any idea of whether we might need some more money than that?
No, I think we're operating with the assumption that this is our budget and we're working within that budget frame. So we've already contracted with a landscape architect because we have to submit a plan to the state to get our state money. So we have negotiated with them to keep that in target, and they're well aware, and I think they all realize that we can probably hit what we want to with that kind of thing.
Great.
I mean, there's always going to be levels of constraint saying, oh, if we had another 150, but we can certainly bring that back to the council. But I'm, right now, we're operating with, this is the amount of money we have, and we're keeping it within that timeframe, that frame. I would offer too, that we are required with the state money. We are required, so if you were to say, well, let's reduce city match, we have a minimum of approximately 45,000 that we'd have to put city money in. So if we wanted to reduce that in any way, we could, the only thing we can reduce is, is the city money. And that would be from 75 to 45, and that we'd have to, there's a required match, local match. Otherwise, you know, that's sort of externally generated, so.
What I was thinking is that this is a project that's been talked about for years and years and years, and there's money that's set aside and then not used and then set aside. And I, I'm really happy to, that we're getting some forward motion on this, and I just want to make sure that if we needed more, we, we had that available. But I guess I'm perfectly happy to see what you've got proposed for this money first, and then if we need to make sure we get stuff in the future, that's great too.
Because the foundation is putting...
I think, because that was exactly, I was thinking, there is this push to make sure that we get this really done right, and I want to make sure we have the money for it.
Yeah, I think, I think we're, we're well on the road to, to knowing the answer to that, but I think we're pretty assured at this point that we get there, and everyone's operating with the assumption that we can do it. And when we talk to the landscape architect, which we've already brought on board, they are very comfortable that that's a reasonable target, and we can accomplish something nice that would be befitting a city like Villa Park.
Perfect.
And it matches with that survey from the point of view of you kind of had a broad spectrum of people saying, you know, some people saying dump a ton of money into it, some people saying don't put any money into it. And so this is kind of that happy medium, right?
Great.
Robbie, do you have any comments?
Mayor?
Yes.
See, the only other thing I wanted to do was ask you to take a look at the 115 trust to see if we could, you know, increase that in any way, shape or form.
I'd like to have the Investment Advisory Council weigh in on that as well.
That's fine, but I'd, I'd like to at least take a look at it and see, because you never can tell. It's always nice to invest for a rainy day.
Bob, do you have any other comments?
No.
Okay. If we don't have any other comments, and staff, you have your clear understanding of the discussions this evening, then I want to thank everyone for their time, and I will adjourn the special session.
Before, I just wanted to make sure that we have the opportunity, next Tuesday evening, the 13th, the city council will be having a special meeting, starting, I want to say, at 5:30, and that's to discuss the housing element update.
Thank you.
So that is, will be zoomed, I mean, sorry, will be streamed again, sorry, streamed, zoomed. Will be zoomed, streamed again, and we'll present that to have an update, and that'll be one of our first real public hearings on input and opportunities for the public to hear and discuss the housing element. So I just wanted to let everybody know and sort of mark their calendar, should they be interested.
Thank you.
How are we outreach into the community so that people are widely aware of this?
That has been, thank you, Councilman. That has been in the feeder, and it will be a special feeder sent out. We're also doing, we've notified the century of the meeting as well, and we're on our social media as well.
Phone a friend, right? Okay. If that's it, the special session is adjourned. Thank you.